Close enough to six o'clock. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Clear Lake City Council, redevelopment successor agency. The order, it is Thursday, January 26, 2017, 6:00 PM. Ma'am clerk, can I have a roll?
Councilmember Overton.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Bennett.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sabatier.
Here.
Mayor Perna.
President. If you would, you please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I introduce to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you could remain standing for just a brief moment of silence. Had a very unique situation occur recently, this smooth transition of power at our federal branch. Let's just pray for our leaders and leadership in Washington that they can settle things down and get to work. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to see if there's any changes to the agenda so we can adopt it.
No changes to the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. We will adopt the agenda as presented.
I have a motion by Councilmember Overton to accept the agenda and a second by Vice Mayor Sabatier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Very well. Mr. Jones, any announcements from closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there is. Councilmember Harris made a motion to deny government claim made by Gage Thayer. It was seconded by Councilmember Overton and the council voted five to zero to deny that claim. That's our report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Well, now I got to get to have some fun. Is Ms. Hutchinson in the audience, please? Cheryl, thank you for coming.
I really tried last time, but I just couldn't.
It's okay. It's okay. For those who may not know, Cheryl has spent many years serving on her planning commission. Things in life change, stuff opens up, and she had to submit her letter of resignation. So we'll be looking for a new planning commissioner. But I want to thank you very much for the number of years. People don't recognize this gets very little pay, and that's about it, about $25 a month, I think, is what you get for reading stacks and stacks of material, coming to meetings, going on site visits, going to trainings. It's kind of an unsung hero, as far as I'm concerned, being on a planning commission, but a very vital, vital role that you played.
And ethics training, too.
Ethics training.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't know why I didn't do that. So I just wanted to thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you.
Along with my peers.
Thank you.
Couldn't have done it without you. So thank you very much.
You sure couldn't, but thank you.
Photo op.
What, no photo op?
Yes, I did. I just moved on.
I have to send this to my mother. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Did you notice the new logo?
Yes, I did. I did notice the new logo. Yes, it's absolutely awesome. Thank you.
Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Cheryl.
Thank you. That was the fun part. No offense, sir, but now we get to hear the review on our audit report. So if you would please, we're going to be accepting our annual audit report for fiscal year 2016, including a report to those charged with the governance and appropriation of the district court. Sir, the floor is yours.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. Before you, it is Kerry Creek, our auditor for the city of Clear Lake. He is going to present our annual audit. He has presented the audit for the past several years, and I just wanted to, before he does that, I just wanted to let you know how pleased I am with the work of my staff in terms of handling the finances of the city, specifically Juanita Correll, Renee Crandell, and of course, Adeline Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Becknell, and thank you to all the staff for the great work they do.
Good evening, and thank you for inviting me here to present to you your June 30, 2016 basic financial statements. I have completed the audit of the city's financial statements and have expressed an independent accountants' opinion that your financial statements do present fairly the financial position of the city and the results of its operations for fiscal year end due to the 2016, all in conformity with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. I want to talk a little bit about the report before you. It's organized. It contains my independent auditor's report, a section called Management's Discussion and Analysis. Where your finance director outlines in a narrative fashion and some financial tables the more significant financial position and activities of the city for the last fiscal year. And there's a section called the Basic Financial Statements, which has two kinds of statements, one being the, they call the government-wide statements, which kind of treats the city as if it were a private company, and a statement of activities. Those statements include depreciation and similar types of things that you would see in a private company. And then there's the fund financial statements, which are the traditional financial statements, except your general fund, your other major funds, and your non-major funds, and the changes in their fund balances and so forth. And notes of financial statements and some required supplemental information, which is a budgetary comparison statement of your general fund and some schedules about the net pension obligation. And then lastly, some combined financial statements of your non-major funds. And that said, I've given you just a brief overview of what the more significant items in your 2016 financial statements. In terms of that fiscal year, the city's funds reported about a $294,000 decrease in fund balances, but that's citywide. A positive of your general fund ended 2016 with a fund balance of about $987,000, which was about $182,000 more than it did where it was at the end of 2015, so that's a positive sign. The city also ended the year with about $9.4 million in unspent bond proceeds that have been previously transferred to the city from the successor agency for use in major infrastructure projects and some housing projects, in accordance with the original purpose for which those tax allocation bonds were sold in days before the redevelopment agency was dissolved. You have about $1.4 million in fund balance in your special housing and revolving funds, which is restricted for capricious purposes, and you have another $464,000 and a number of different special restricted police funds, and about $600,000 in your street estate gas tax form, which is available for street-related projects. On an overall basis, the other significant item in your financial statements, of course, is the employee's pension obligation. That actually went down from about $5.6 million to $5.2 million, and the decrease, really, was the result of changes in the actuarial valuations that had been performed, primarily a decrease in the expectation of earnings on pension on assets held by the purse. That's pretty much an overview of what's in your 2016 audited financial statements. I have provided other reports to you, as you mentioned, the letter to those charged with governance, where I outline matters concerning the conduct of the audit. At this point, I would mention that I had no difficulty performing the audit of your financial statements. Your accounts are very professionally and actively maintained, and you have great staff. At this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions if I can.
Very well, sir. Any questions for those gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll leave it with you. Thank you very much for your time and your report.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is public comment. Public comment is a time for anyone to address the council on a subject matter not on our agenda for tonight. You have up to three minutes to speak on any topic that you choose, but we will monitor that time. The council cannot respond to questions, so if you ask us questions, we'll have to refer you perhaps to a staff member or meet with you possibly after the meeting to answer your question, but since it's not an agenda, it's an agenda item, we cannot speak that before. So with that, I would like to open the floor for public comment, and I have no pre-prepared cards, so if someone would like to speak, this is your time. Good to see you again, sir. Please introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Jerry Mayfield, and it's wonderful to see you as well. I just wanted to say congratulations, Mr. Harris, and my wife hurt herself, so everything doesn't always work out the best, but it works out how it's supposed to be because my time is really limited. She's not working, but I wasn't qualified anyway. You guys have been here for a long time, done a lot for the community, and I don't have any empty allocations or smothering bad hand hitting agenda things. So they asked me, what have you done? I'll just continue coaching Little League and cleaning up the place, and in four years, if there's a need, maybe I'll throw my hat back in. Good luck and take care.
Thank you for your time. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Phil Chiles, I'd like to congratulate the council on their election, and the best good luck to you. Have a good one.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Move down to our consent agenda. Any changes to the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmembers, any changes? Is there any item on the consent agenda that a member of the public would like to hear openly? Seeing none, I'll bring that back for motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to a group of consent agenda as is.
I'll second that. I have a motion to second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Sillie. Moving on to item eight. This is a public hearing to confirm assessments through our code enforcement. This is an open public hearing, and at this time, I would like to pass it to staff. Mr. Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're just warming up our presentation here, but I'll be introducing Code Enforcement Officer Tina Barmontes to give our presentation on this before the public hearing.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, ma'am. Thank you.
The purpose of this hearing is to consider and act upon any and all protests of proposed assessments for recovery of the costs of administrative penalties for future and for failure to abate public nuisances. Upon consideration of the evidence and testimony, council may grant the protest and revise the resolution to remove the assessments or deny the protest and confirm the assessments as proposed, or modify, reduce the amount of the assessments and revise the resolution to reflect the modified assessments. To pre-hearing information, the property owners were given notice of violations and adequate time to voluntarily correct the violations. The property owners failed to abate public nuisances on the said properties within the prescribed time. One property owner did come in and begin abating the violations, so staff recommends pulling the property number nine at 15100 Lakeview Avenue. Pre-hearing information, the property owners were given notice of their right to appeal the imposition of administrative penalties, and the property owners failed to submit in writing a notice of appeal and administrative penalties within the prescribed time allowed. Pre-hearing information, attached to the staff report is the proposed resolution confirming assessment, statement of expenses for the proposed assessment, and the supporting evidence. Staff recommends that council confirm all assessments as proposed, with the exception of property number nine at 15100 Lakeview Avenue. Should the council or the property owners wish to address me as the sighting officer, I am able and willing to respond to questions. Property number one is located at 3380 Amber Avenue. Property owner is Kenneth Anderson. Administrative penalty assessment is $2,500.
Not cooperating.
Property number one, the accumulation and/or storage of garbage, junk, appliances, inoperable vehicles, et cetera. Condition recognized in law constituting a public nuisance and/or visual blight, violation of any provision of the Clearly Commutable Code, CMC 10-1.6J, CMC 10-1.6W, CMC 10-1.6Z. The sighting officer was myself, Tina Barmontes. This was a picture taken on the day the case was opened, 12/8/2015.
And this was a vacant, is it supposed to be a vacant?
Correct. This is designated as a vacant parcel.
So there shouldn't be anything on a vacant parcel?
Correct. Nothing is allowed on a vacant parcel. This was a picture on 1/25/2017.
Okay.
Can we handle these one at a time?
Yeah, let's handle these one at a time. Any questions of staff? Go ahead, councilmember.
Okay, it doesn't look like that picture is the same as the other picture from back, so however you to tell what that property actually looks like now. Is it still the same?
Yes.
This picture is as of today.
No, it was.
But it's not taking as far back and showing the whole property, so when we do.
Go back one frame.
Another one, back to the very one, seeing how far back that is. So it was all exactly like this?
Yes.
Okay.
Have the vehicles been removed and the RV is new? Or are the vehicles just in the?
They're all, it's kind of moved around. I think the RV in the beginning picture was in the backboard long ways, but everything's just kind of moved around. It shifted, but it's all still there.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Vice Mayor?
I'm going to make a statement more so than a question at this moment in time, and I'm sorry I have to make this statement, but I'm very disappointed that as a council, we made a consensus to ask to review our code enforcement process because we had concerns, we had worries that maybe the process wasn't working for our community, maybe it wasn't working for us to be able to get to the conclusions that we're looking for, and that process has not been brought back to us to review. And today, we're here looking to assess properties based on a process that we are struggling to know whether or not this is working for us or not. So that's really disappointing for me. I feel like we are trying to guide our staff and that that guidance was not adhered to. I have reviewed all of these, and I am definitely willing to move forward and continue, but I will refuse to do another assessment hearing if we do not review our process. There's certain things, even with this property, that I would like to discuss. I want to buy a vacant lot next to my house, but maybe I don't know that I need to merge it before I can put stuff into it. So there's certain things that I would like us to look at when we're reviewing this process to make sure that we're working with our community to the best that we can. So I needed to put that out there, and let's vote.
Perhaps at the latter part of the meeting, you might propose an action, whether it be ad hoc or something.
Yes, I will.
Thank you. All right. At this time, is the appellant present in the area? Please step forward, Mr. Anderson, and this is your chance to tell us what your plan is.
All right, my plan is, I've already moved that motorhome off my property three times. The mom's to my mother's, my late mother's boyfriend. He's a 74-year-old Vietnam veteran, and he, I go down to Sacramento work every other week or so. Every time I leave, I come back after moving the vehicle, it's back on the property, and I've moved it off three times. Tina knows this, she's seen me do it before, and I don't even know what to do. I can't go there physically drag him off there, you know what I mean? I've tried everything I can do to get him out of there with no avail.
Is he simply storing the RV there, or is he living in it?
He's living in it.
Addressing the other issues, does he kind of have a metal shed with material in it? Can you tell us about that?
That was completely cleaned out, too, like I said. And my mom's boyfriend for 26 years, whatever, okay, and he just, he won't listen to me. I've tried everything I can do. I had everything cleaned. She's getting it cleaned, haven't you, Tina?
It was getting better.
I mean, I cleaned it. He moved, I went to Sacramento one time, I came back after moving that area right there, I come back and I send him the front lot, and I'm like, oh, great, you know? So fought with him and fought with him, you know, physically, verbally. Finally, he didn't do that, so I dragged it out of there again myself, and thought, maybe he's gone now. I dragged him across the street, you know, it's like, it doesn't run, so I, you know, I didn't really know what to do there, but I'd get it off my property so I don't get a penalty for it. And I tried to tell him about this, and he just don't care, you know what I mean? Because it's not him getting the penalty. And like I said, he just put it back there after movement the third time, and I don't know what to do. I mean, talks it out there, they try to get him to move it, give him tickets for illegal camping, and et cetera, et cetera, and still refuses to leave. I mean, after I could be dragging him out of there, literally.
Ma'am, could you explain what the violations are in total? I mean, other than, I'm assuming that the accessory structure, is that legally there?
To my knowledge, no.
Can we go back a couple of pictures, back to the first? No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, there or the next one.
The next one shows.
There you go. Your question?
No, it has all of that. I mean, there's a lot of stuff there.
I didn't know that you could put anything on a vacant lot like that, you know? It's right next to my house if you're, I could put one there, but I realized you can't. The parts that you see there are not there no more. The only thing that's there right now is the motorhome and the boat.
And the shed?
The shed has always been there since I've had the property.
Okay. So the only reason why that picture was taken so close is because that's the only thing left on the property?
Yes. I was just at an angle, and I was trying to revisit that same angle, and I just couldn't achieve it.
So that's basically the only thing left on the property, is that thing?
Yes, all of them.
Any other questions? Anyone else? Is there anything else you'd like to share with us at this time? Do you have anyone here with you? Oh, go ahead, councilmember.
It's your mother's boyfriend?
It was my late mother's boyfriend.
Your late mother's boyfriend. Didn't the officers ever suggest to you a restraining order against him? He has no standing in that property.
No, they did not.
Oh, you know, there's also, there are many alternatives to removing him from there. One is a restraining order. He's causing you headaches.
He's been abused.
He knows what he's doing.
Obviously.
And it's up to you to take the initiative. That's a joke, or nobody wants to live next to that.
You better believe it. I don't like it myself.
Well, you lived with it for quite a while, you know? I don't mean to get on you, but with all those other cars out there and stuff, those were your vehicles?
One of them was.
So the rest of them were all his? Who's boat is that?
His.
There's a process and a restraining order, and if he violates that, then it's on him?
Civil restraining order, what kind of restraining order would it be?
Restraining, go down to courthouse. It's your property. If he's causing you heartaches, and you're going to get.
He is.
You're going to get assessed for this. There's your basis.
Actually, a restraining order, pardon?
I want to advise him trespass.
Sure. You can use police reports as a basis on that, and so on. Do you like to go to the police department, discuss trespassing, but he needs to be advised on it. Where's he get his power from?
He steals it from me.
And you have no knowledge of that?
I do, but like I said, I've done everything I can do. I go out there, I'm plugging everything, but he just don't stop, and I go back and forth from here to Sacramento. I work down there every week, like I said, and I'll be gone for a week, get a time, and I come back, and it's just right back for a second.
Anything else? Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address this issue? This is your time to say so, and address council. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to, or any motion to close public hearing, bring it back to council.
So moved, please close the, motion to close the public hearing.
Have a motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. You have come, sir.
I'm just going to offer one more suggestion. We're looking at a potential fine of $2,500 on your property because of this, and I believe that possibly for $2,500, you could protect your property by building a fence, and this would have solved your problem from being able to have somebody dump a vehicle onto your property, just to help in the future.
Thank you. The other public? What's your pleasure?
So we're going to do each one of these separate resolutions?
Yeah, we're going to take it one at a time.
Different resolutions?
Mayor?
Different resolutions?
I think we have one resolution.
Yeah, I was going to say that's not here.
All right, so we'll move on to number two, then.
So it's up to you, Mayor. You may want to have, if you want consensus now, and so you've written that down, or however you want to do it, so you have a motion at the end, as opposed to trying to recall at the very end what happened in each one. It's your prerogative on that.
All right, what's consensus on item one?
Move forward.
Okay. Move forward. So we have unanimous consensus to move forward on item one?
Property number two is 3556 Madrone Street. Owner is Peter Wong. Administrative penalty assessment is $2,500.
So Peter, when you want me to go with the next one, just say next.
Okay, next. He was cited for the accumulation and/or storage of garbage, junk, appliances, inoperable vehicles, et cetera, boxes, lumber, trash, dirt, et cetera, stored and visible from street and/or nearby properties, injures to health, offensive to senses, obstruct free use slash enjoyment of property, stacking, storage of combustible material, increasing hazard or menace of fire. Next. Condition recognized in law constituting a public nuisance and/or visual blight, violation of any provision of the Clearly Commutable Code, illegal installation, placement, and/or height of fence, all or hedge.
And let's just go with numerous CMC.
Gotcha.
As listed.
This is the picture, the first picture on the day he was originally cited, which is 2/11/2016. Next. This is another picture. Next. Next. This was just the other day on the 20, looks like 23rd of 2017. Next. That's it.
Move forward.
Mr. Harris, so we have unanimous consensus to move forward on item one?
Property number two is 3556 Madrone Street. Owner is Peter Wong. Administrative penalty assessment is $2,500.
So Peter, when you want me to go with the next one, just say next.
Okay, next. He was cited for the accumulation and/or storage of garbage, junk, appliances, inoperable vehicles, et cetera. Boxes, lumber, trash, dirt, et cetera, stored and invisible from street and/or nearby properties. Injurious to health, offensive to senses, obstruct free use slash enjoyment of property. Stacking, storage of combustible material increasing hazard or menace of fire. Next. Condition recognized in law constitution constituting a public nuisance and/or visual blight. Violation of any provision of the Clearly Minuscule Code. Illegal installation, placement and/or height of fence, all or hedge.
And let's just go with numerous CMC.
Gotcha.
As listed.
This is the picture, the first picture on the day he was originally cited, which is 211, 2016. Next. This is another picture. Next. Next. This was just the other day on the twenty, looks like twenty-third of 2017. Next. That's it.
That concludes that one.
This over to?
So, so is this fence that's here, the trash behind it, is still his property?
Correct.
Okay.
Vice Mayor.
Ms. Veramonte, if I remember correctly, there's been no action whatsoever on this property to clean?
No, sir. He did come in today and you guys all have a copy.
Yeah.
I did read the letter that was presented to us and my question is, was there anything notable on your visits that indicates that he did make an attempt to at least alleviate some of the recycling as indicated in the letter? Or was there anything changed?
I could not notice any change.
Assistant, good. I also read the letter and he mentioned about a lot of recycling materials. I looked at the picture and I see junk, garbage, a haven for rats and infestation. Is there any sign of collected recyclables that may, I mean, of any quantity? Down the line may support anything in his letter?
You know, it was all tied in bags. I didn't go through the bags, I couldn't really see. We did notice the boxes. There was wet books, things like that outside, but as far as the recyclable, I honestly could not make that kind of judgment.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is there brother or vigorous around there?
Does it stink?
A little bit, yes.
You're trying to teach a word.
I know.
I have a little one in here. I, I noticed that, you know, Mr. Bennett, Councilmember Bennett, touched on the idea of the nuisance by rats and other rodents that would accumulate in such a situation. Is that having an impact on the community around this Brisbane?
I was told by a neighbor that they have to have monthly service because of the infestation.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments, questions? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I mean, this is not necessarily a question on whether or not there is a violation, but at what point can the county hazmat help us out with this current situation? Because if this doesn't get resolved, this is a sad situation for the neighbors. Wondering if some of the testimony from the neighbors having to get monthly service is something that can help us get the county hazmat to help out with this property to get it cleaned up.
I haven't reached out to them, but I definitely could.
Thank you.
I tried to visit the properties we were hearing tonight. And I believe this gentleman also has his home pretty impacted with this material as well. Is he still living outside?
To the best of my knowledge, yes, he is.
Thank you. Anything else? I'd like to open, open it up to the public. Is Mr. Wong here to speak on this? I know he received the letter, I've read it. Like to introduce him as part of the case in his defense. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to close the public hearing on this item. Have a motion to do so?
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor, close public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Passes unanimously. What is your pleasure on property two?
If there's no more discussion, I'd like to move forward.
Consensus agreed? Very well, thank you. Have unanimous consent to move forward.
Property?
Go ahead.
Property three is 15345 Mason Street. The owner is William Burgess. Administrative penalty assessment is $2,500. Accumulation and/or storage of garbage, junk, appliances, inoperable vehicles, et cetera. Condition recognized as law constituting a public nuisance and/or visual blight. Violation of any provision of the Clearly Minuscule Code. CMC 10-1.6J, CMC 10-1.6WZ. And I was the citing officer. This is a picture from the first day the case was opened on 218, 2016, sorry. Next. This is another picture from that day. Next. This was taken on the 23rd of January, 2017. Next. And that's it.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Vice Mayor?
I want to say that, and I don't know if we're allowed to co-mingle with this or not, but this is not the first time that this name has come up as far as a property owner for a sentence that have come before us. Is this correct or?
I'm not sure offhand, I don't, I don't remember, it does sound familiar, but I deal with it every day.
If that is the case, is there an ordinance within our city that might allow us to have more leverage on multiple violations on multiple properties?
I'm not aware of any.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Bennett?
I just want to make it clear that these folks have been, property owners have been notified of the violations on one or more times by registered mail and contacted?
Correct. The first notice was sent out regular mail. The second notice and the third notice get sent in regular mail. They get registered mail and they are posted on the property.
Okay, thank you.
And this, this motorhome we see here, is this on the same property as the home or is this on adjacent property as well?
This is a vacant parcel.
And is it owned by the same person that owns the home?
No.
Thank you. And the multiple violations you've identified, not just in this case, but in others, they were provided to the property owner simultaneously?
Correct.
Any other questions? I'd like to open a public hearing on this item, number four. No, I'm sorry, item three. Is Mr. Burgess in the audience? Would you like to speak on this? Or someone representing him? Seeing none. And no public comment on this item. I will close or request a motion to close public comment. Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion carries unanimously. What is your pleasure, counsel? I have a...
Agreed.
We have consensus, all four, and myself. It's unanimous to move forward on item number three. Moving on to item four?
Property four is 3619 Sycamore Street. The owner is Edward and Lila Tillman. Administrative penalties is $7,500. Next.
If I may interrupt real quick, I'm gonna recuse myself from this specific property since it is about three doors down from my house.
So on that, if you're gonna recuse yourself, Councilmember Sabatier would ask you to step out and we'll bring you back. I'll come get you when we're on to the next property, but thank you. And then when we take the resolution at the end, we'll actually have to take two resolutions with regard to this particular one.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Veramonte, please.
Okay. Accumulation and/or storage of junk, garbage, junk, appliances, inoperable vehicles, et cetera. Condition recognized in law constituting a public nuisance and/or visual blight. Illegal installation, placement and/or height of fence or hedge. CMC 10-1-J-W and 18-5.801. I was the citing officer. This is a picture on 8/18/2015. This is another picture of that same day. This was a picture of the property in its current condition on 125/2017. And this is another one.
I went by there today and your pictures don't really do it justice. There's additional boats and things that are outside the picture also responding or attached to this property. Any comments, questions of staff? Seeing none, I will open a public hearing on this item. Is the property owner present or someone wishing to speak for them? For the Tillmans? Seeing no comment, would you like a motion to close?
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Councilor or Vice Mayor Sabatier refused himself. So we will move forward. I'm sorry, any other consensus? Councilmember Bennett? Agree. You want to move forward? All those agreement? Okay, we have unanimous, Vice Mayor Sabatier being absent. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Recuse, thank you. Moving on to location five, 15210 Cass. One more item, five.
All right, thank you.
Property five, 15210 Cass Avenue. Owner is Richard Kenyon Senior. Administrative penalty assessment is $2,500. Accumulation and/or storage of garbage, junk, appliances, inoperable vehicles, et cetera. Condition recognized in law constituting a public nuisance and/or visual blight. Violation of any provision of the Clearly Minuscule Code. I am the citing officer.
Go, officer? Questions? I'm sorry, go ahead.
This is a picture taken on 10/28/2015 when the case was opened. This is another picture on that day. And this, that one right there, it is taken on the 23rd of January, 2017.
Few years ago.
And this is another one taken on that same day.
By today, nothing's changed. Very well, any questions of staff? I'd like to open this for public hearing. Is the property owner present? Mr. Kenyon? Very well, time to motion to close.
Motion to close.
Have a motion in a second, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Carries unanimously. What is your pleasure? Move forward?
Move forward, please.
Mr. Harris? So moving forward, item five. Let's move on to number six.
Property number six is 4397 Old Highway 53. The owner is Gerardo Villalobos and Cecilia Palmar Velazquez. The administrative penalty assessment is $5,000. Defective, deteriorated unsightly and/or disrepair any building, wall, fence, driveway, et cetera. Broken windows causing hazardous conditions or inviting trespassers and/or mischief. Causing, maintaining and permitting graffiti or unauthorized markings. Condition recognized in law constituting a public nuisance and/or visual blight. Violation of any provision of the Clearly Minuscule Code. Illegal installation, placement and/or height of fence, wall or hedge. CMC 10-1.6D, also E, also S, also W, also Z, and 18-5.801, and I was again the citing officer. This was a picture on November 12th, 2015, when the case was first opened. And that's another picture. This was taken on the 23rd of January, 2017. And so was this picture.
Tina, want to explain what?
This house was cited for, there was graffiti on what appears to be the garage. I believe this house was a burned out house several years back and has just been neglected.
Thank you, anything else? Any questions of staff? Yeah, this is a very notable property. It's right on one of our main drives and it's needing much repair or carrying.
Is there anybody living there?
To my knowledge, no. I've never seen anybody there and I haven't received complaints that there's people in there.
Okay. Any other questions of staff?
We've made a confirmed contact of the homeowner.
Oh, I...
Believe he's here. Oh!
Yes, we have.
I'd like to open this for public hearing, sir, if you'd like to. Let us know what your plan is for the property.
Yeah, this is my property. This property, I gave it to me some, my grandma, like two, three years ago. And I don't see nothing like this. Only I received last week one notice to check something like that. But I'm thinking, just first go to clean, when finish the water. And after this, start to rebuild everything.
I'm sorry?
I, I, I want to rebuild everything.
You will clean everything?
Uh huh. Yeah, that's the idea. Just before, I don't see nothing about this. Somebody give it to me, yeah. That's why.
Three, three years ago.
Yeah, when did you become the owner of the property?
Yes, my grandma told me was born the property. She don't want it and just give it to me and put to my, my wife.
How long ago?
Like three years, like over years ago. Uh huh, something like that.
Do you live around here?
I live, normally I live right here now, yeah? But I live in another house that I don't put that, actually.
But it wasn't clearly that you lived?
Yeah, that's unclear.
Were you, were you the owner of the home when it burned?
That, when they give it to me, sorry, when they give it to me already burned, yeah?
You obtained, okay, so you obtained it in the condition it's in now?
I think the condition, maybe it's not only what I need to do or something.
And we hung notices on the residence, right?
Yes.
You didn't find the notice hung on the residence?
I don't take any one for it.
And we also mailed the notice?
Yes, and regular posted mail and registered.
So, who was registered?
First registered mail was sent out and accepted on, well, the postage date is the 25th of January, 2016.
I don't take it, I don't know.
A little over a year.
So, but we have proof that somebody signed for registered?
I understand, but I live in another address, maybe don't take it. But now I hear for clear evidence.
And so have you, when was the last time you guys communicated about this property even? I mean, when, when did communications start here?
The first time I met this gentleman or communicated with anybody regarding this property was just the other day and I believe it was Monday.
So just this week? I'm assuming.
Oh, I, correct, it was Tuesday.
Right. So what's your, what's your mailing address that you have now?
Is 14455 Robinson Avenue, clearly. So maybe you have...
So it's not accepted?
No, I apologize, it was, show's open.
Okay, so that one was?
I apologize, it was returned to sender nondeliberately.
Okay, so it was returned?
Or maybe when I came here like three years ago, I live in a, in a parking lot in highway number one space on Highway 53. Maybe it's the address where you mailed that thing, that's why.
That is the address that was sent to.
But I moved this house like two, more than two years from Robinson. It's my, I told you.
All right, but you did know the house was burned and it needed to be taken care of and you haven't done it. Was there a reason? I mean, it's, it's right on our main road, it's right on our, our main, what we want to create our green belt here. So, I mean, something has to be done with it. Can't sit there and burn like that, so. And you knew that when you, when you got the property correct, that it was burned and you needed to do something with it?
Have you provided your updated contact information to the committee?
I came with her, but she told me came today to write on to right here.
I just wrote down the address.
All right, I was just making sure we've obtained every, every means of contacting you.
And you might want to update that on the title deed as well, that way next time there's ever a need for anybody to contact you that can have the proper address. I want to make sure that you know, because we didn't share this today, and this is for everybody else as well that has their property listed on here, that we do have an ordinance that if you clean this up within thirty days, we can reduce the fine. I would love to see that. I would love to see that house reduced to either nothing or be repaired. I'm not sure exactly what's possible, but if you are being honest with us and you want to take care of it, then the fine can be reduced. Please talk with Tina to get the exact details on that. But if you don't want to have to pay a $5,000 fine and you want to reduce that, then, then please do so. We would all appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Thank you.
I just wanted to point out that on the 6th of January 2016, it was returned unclaimed. The next notice that it's sent out. Anything else, sir?
Yeah, nothing.
Any other questions of the panel? Anything else?
No, sorry.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on this particular item? I have a motion for the public hearing on this.
I'll make a motion for the second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimous. Bring it back for action. Move forward. Agree? Move forward?
Yep.
Thank you, gentlemen. So unanimous to move forward on this item as well.
Do you mind if I ask a further question? And I think I know the answer, I just want to make sure. This is the first time that we are assessing this property for this problem, correct?
To my knowledge, yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure we weren't adding another $5,000 on top of something else for a burned down house? That's what I just, uh?
The council member Bennett pointed out that if the property is cleaned up within a 30-day time period, the hearing would be by our city manager to reduce the fine. Moving on to the next.
Property seven is 3406 Harrison Street. The owner is Michael S. Murray. The administrative penalty assessment is $7,500. He was cited for accumulation and/or storage of garbage, junk appliances, inoperable vehicles, et cetera, condition recognized in law constituting a public nuisance and/or visual blight, violation of any provision of the Clear Lake Municipal Code. The codes were CMC 10-1.6J, also W, and also Z, and I was the sighting officer. This is a picture taken on the day it was, the case was opened on 9/28/2015. This is another picture on that day. This was a picture on January 23rd, 2017. And this is also another picture on that day.
Any questions of staff? None? I'd like to open it for public hearing or public comment. Are Murray's present and they'd like to speak on this item? Are anyone representing them? Say none? Need a motion to close? Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Closing the public hearing. What is your consensus? Move forward?
Move forward.
Double jump card.
Consensus on that? Go ahead, man.
Property eight is 14845 Highlands Way. The owner is Dennis and Donna Hickey. The administrative penalty assessment is $2,500. Defective, deteriorated unsightly and/or disrepair of any building, wall, fence, driveway, et cetera, condition recognized in law constituting a public nuisance and/or visual blight, violation of any provision in the Clear Lake Municipal Code. He was cited for CMC 10-1.6D, also W, and also Z. I was the sighting officer. This is a picture taken on 12/1/2015 of the property. This property is also a vacant parcel. And this picture is on January 23rd, 2017.
Thank you. Any questions of staff on this item?
Is there a permit issued for the fence construction?
No.
I'd like to open this up for public comment, public hearing. Are the Hickeys present? Would you like to speak with us about this?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I need to remove myself. I didn't realize it was this property here and I know them so for a while, so I'm going to remove myself right now.
So council member Overton is recusing herself for a personal relationship? We'll come get you. All right, very good. Go ahead, sir.
I purchased the property from my parents who divorced about five years ago. We haven't got the deed switched over into my name yet, so I haven't been getting all the mail for there. So I've tried the, I can see I've tried the property fence up here and there, the fence is about 15 years old, the soil there is just real hard to work with. And I need to fix it, I know I need to, but I haven't got all the notices up to the fact that now when I, my uncle said, well, there's something hanging on the fence, so I got this from here, so that's why I'm here.
What's your intent with the property? What do you want to do with it?
Well, I would like to put a trailer on it eventually and rent it out as another income.
A manufactured home?
Yes.
Okay.
In time.
And are you going to keep the fence?
No, fence has got to go. It's got to be fixed, it can't be left like that, but it's, right now I don't really have the money to fix it. You know, like I said, I've tried to prop it up here and there, I can go back and try to fix it a little more, but I think I'm better off just taking it down than.
I'm confused. You said you were going to take it down, then you said you were going to fix it, what?
Well, I'd probably just take it down. But I have, I have an old truck behind there too, that was my dad's, and I'm going to have to get rid of it, so if I take it down, it's going to just be another, you know, another problem. So it's, it's 22, it's like, what? Take it down and not do nothing, leave it up and try to fix it, it's just.
Have you spoken to our code enforcement officer about?
I've got, my girlfriend's got a hold of it because I don't get home until after five. So it's, we called her and left messages and haven't, we didn't get back the last time, but we haven't touched bases in the last two months, I think.
It's been several months.
Yeah.
So one more question, how long do you think it would take for you to take the fence down if that's your decision? 10, 15 minutes?
Yeah. I mean, a weekend probably, you know, I could get rid of the fence.
I apologize, I didn't mean to.
No, it's all right.
If you pull braces down, it's kind of.
It's falling over, it's, yeah, it's a problem.
I went up and looked today and it looks just like that.
Yeah, that's, there's no doubt about it.
There's a boat, I think, also on the street?
It's parked in the front of the property.
Right, is that yours as well?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I've been honking all the time. Anybody else have a question?
Just out of curiosity, if the fence was taken down, you kind of made subtle mention of this, but if the fence was taken down, I assume it's hiding some blight behind the fence then?
Yeah, there's an old hot tub that was, because my parents own the property next door, and the one they divorced, they lost the house, so I bought the property from them. And so there is some stuff behind the fence, it's, exactly, the fence is hiding a little more. I'm probably better off trying to fix the fence than tear it down, but it's, when you really don't have the funds to fix the fence, it's hard to.
Well, once again, like we brought up before, the action taken against this property, you can actually have the fine reduced by, by taking action yourself, so if it's dollars for dollars, we'd much rather see you spend those dollars working towards a solution than the fine, obviously.
100%.
And there was some communication between me and Tina like once or twice, and we got like an extension on it, and then because we weren't getting the mail, it was kind of like an out of sight, out of mind thing, so then that's when we finally got this and we came to the hearing to try to fix it rather than, like you said, have the fine, because there's definitely no way we could do both things, pay the fine and fix it, so.
Appreciate that. Our goal here, and with any of these properties, is simply to clean up, you know, the property.
Yeah.
Because it does impact the neighborhood and it drops property values, and I recognize that our code enforcement has a great task upon them. Anything else?
Just to reiterate my statement again, the fine would actually be reduced based off of you taking action, so instead of paying both, it would be money well served to spend whatever you could towards getting the solution made.
Well, that's why we're here, is just to get more time on it rather than getting the fine, because that's what I thought that like by now the fine is just there regardless, so that's why we're here, is hoping that, that we can get more time to fix it before we get the fine again, or is it just the fine is already what it is?
I believe the, the number is 30 days, so you'll have, if action's taken today, then you'll have 30 days to alleviate the issue and you'll get with the city manager on that.
Would you like to explain it?
Yeah, I don't have the specifics in front of me, but as I recall, if, if you approve the fine, you have a fine.
Okay.
But you'll have 30 days to, I think it's get it reduced by 90%.
Oh, okay.
If you take longer than 30 days, you take 60 days, then I think it's like.
20, 25?
Yeah, 75% that you have, that is reduced.
Okay.
If it takes longer than that, then, you know, so it's progressively, it's going to cost you more to procrastinate. So if you get it done right away, you're going to end up, you know, having the least amount of fine.
Right.
Issue it. That's.
And I do see here on the original violation, which dates all the way back to December 1st, 2015, that it says your fence is dilapidated and needs to be repaired, so this was definitely a known issue and not just a vague CMC municipal code that was written on the.
Right, that's why I propped it up the first time, thinking, hey, I might get it, because there was, my neighbors had put a trash trailer out in front there, and then I did have a travel trailer there that was licensed, and I have my boat there, I had another fishing boat there, and one of my friends had parked a truck out front, and I cleaned all that out of there, and now the issue is the fence, and I need my boat back down there because we have a barbecue, I don't know how much parking.
And as you've heard with some of the other properties we've dealt with, that there's certain restrictions on what you can do on a vacant lot as well, so note that for the future.
Yeah, which we didn't know in the, for the original, when we first got the information, we didn't know that we couldn't store like our vehicles there.
Do you have any other questions, so we can hopefully get this resolved?
No.
You could do it.
Oh, I know, yeah, I can, I can do it, that's for sure.
And please keep communicating with our code enforcement team.
Yeah, I need to get my parents to sign the deed over so that the mail comes to me and say, oh, it's my dad's P.O. box, and he checks his P.O. box about once every three months, so it's hard to, really sick, can't get one or not in the loop, you know?
Yeah, I think the paperwork required is pretty minimal when you get it recorded.
Yeah, I just have a pulse a minute.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else?
All right, thank you, sir.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? And I'll bring back, draw the motion.
Motion to close public hearing, second?
I have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? There is none?
And I agree with Mr. Bennett.
Council member Overton is, had to recuse herself. So I've moved forward.
Move forward, please.
And myself as well. So we'll move forward with that, we have 30 days to get that remedied and our staff knows. And item nine was removed. Council member Overton, now we need to do three, separating item eight and what was the other, Laura?
And four.
And so four, yeah.
So what, yeah, three separate resolutions.
Okay.
And if I have a moment, can I speak on item nine?
Okay.
So item nine was taken off because the, the property owner took action and was removed from this list because they actually stepped forward and did take action on the property, so they did actually take the necessary, necessary steps towards alleviating the issue on their property, that's why it was removed from our list here.
And hence did not get a fine assessed on their property.
That is, that is what we hope for. All right, so I need a motion?
I have a question here.
Mr.?
In a minute. So, so the resolution here, we have resolution 2017-06, so is it going to be 07, 08? How are we going to do that? I figure we might as well get that cleared out before we start doing the resolutions.
Yes, I don't think we have an 07.
No, we do.
Yeah, item number nine, business item number nine is resolution number 2017-07.
Okay, so then would it be 08 and then 09? So 06?
Correct.
08 and 09. I just wanted to make sure you guys are trying to do the resolutions.
Thank you for the clarification, council member Overton. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt resolution 2017-06 to confirm assessments and for, in accordance with CMC section, for penalties for failure to evade public nuisance in accordance with CMC sections 1-5, 1-9, 10-1.6, 10-1.7, 10-1.9, 10-1.12, 10-2.2B, 10-2.4, 10-2.5, 10-2.6, 10-2.7, 2.8, 3.1, 3.3, 10-5, and 10-5.6 for properties number 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, and 7.
I have a motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Council member Overton?
Aye.
Council member Harris?
Aye.
Council member Bennett?
Aye.
Vice mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Burdock?
Aye.
Now let's address item four.
In fact, I should, this item, council member Sabatier should step out just for the 30 seconds through this, and we'll do the same for, for council member Overton if you can.
Yes, I'd like to make the resolution number 2016-8. One seven.
One, is it one seven? No, one seven is already used, it's one eight. For number four, right? One eight, and read it by the title on the resolution of the city council of the city of Clear Lake confirming special assessment that's consistent of administrative penalties for failure to evade public nuisance and approving, lean against real property in accordance with section 1-5, 1-9, 10-1.6, 1.7, 1.9, 1.12, and 10-2.2B, 10-2.4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, 10-3.1, 3, 10-5, and 10-5.6 of the city of Clear Lake Municipal Code for property located at, is it 3619 Sycamore Street?
I have a motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Council member Overton?
Aye.
Council member Harris?
Aye.
Council member Bennett?
Aye.
Mayor Burdock?
Aye, and vice mayor Sabatier had to recuse himself. And then we have item eight, council member Overton. But it's what needs to happen. And that could be resolution number, just for.
2017-9.
Bashment, thank you. Would you like to read that, vice mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt resolution 2017-909 for administrative penalties for failure to evade public nuisance in accordance with all the CMC sections listed for item number eight, or not item number eight, property number eight.
You could do that for him, Mr. Jones?
I am.
Very good to go then. So I have a motion in a second, play council member Bennett. Roll call vote, please.
Council member Harris?
Aye.
Council member Bennett?
Aye.
Vice mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Burdock?
Aye.
Council member Overton recused herself for a relationship that, that. Anybody need a break at this time? We have a request for a five-minute break. We will reconvene in five minutes. We reconvene, we reconvene. And moving on to business. Item number nine, consideration of appointment of Measure V Oversight Committee. Mr. Folsom, do you have a report for it?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor, if my thing will work this time. Okay, so Measure V requires the appointment of the citizens oversight committee. Each council member shall appoint one member. The committee member's term will coincide with the appointing council member's term. Once the appointments are made, the mayor shall appoint a chairperson, subject to approval of the council. At the December 8th council meeting, the consensus was to solicit applications for appointment, but council members are free to appoint any call. appointment, but council members are free to appoint any qualified resident. The applicants we received are Henry Bornstein, Mark Berkdahl, Kurt Jim Bruno, James Honiger, Jim Schultz, William Shields, Ray Silva, Dirk Sluton, and Mike Van Dieter. Our recommended action is that by motion, adopt resolution number twenty seventeen dash oh seven, appointing five members of the Measure V Citizen Oversight Committee, and read it in its entirety stating the appointees. And I'll go back to the other ones. So it's pretty much up to you how you all want to do this.
Thank you very much, sir. Upon review, and I spoke with Mr. Jones at our break, we've all been provided the resume and applications.
Mm-hmm.
I'm assuming everyone's had the time to take a chance to look at those. I would like to open it up for question of staff, if you have any questions regarding the applicants or their resume. At that point, I would then like to open it up to the community and these applicants for public comment, if they would like to come and share their experience, information with the council, they have that time to do that, if they choose not to, that's okay too. And then we can bring it back, as each individual council member, as it was described by Mr. Folsom, will be appointing one member from the applicant pool.
Clarification doesn't necessarily have to be from the applicant pool.
Thank you for doing it. It could be a member in large.
Right. As long as they are a citizen of the city.
A resident of.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Folsom. Does anybody have any questions of staff, or a better interpretation than what I just offered? All right, thank you all very much. So there being no questions of staff at this time, I'd like to open it up to the public. Any member of the public wishing to talk about this item, please step forward. Any applicant, if you'd like to share with us your personal reasons, why you'd like to sit on the Oversight Committee for Measure V, we'd love to hear that. Don't everybody run to the mic at once, please form a line to the right. All kidding aside, I don't see anyone approaching the mic, so I can close the public comment portion, and bring it back to council for further deliberation.
Are appointees that were?
If you want to jump right to that, Councilmember Overton, we can do that.
I'd like to appoint for my appointee, Mike Van Dieter.
I believe it's pronounced Van- Van Dieter. Is that correct, sir? Yeah.
I don't think Mike Van Dieter is what you're calling. I was trying to get it right.
You gotta remember, that's my son, not me. Yeah, 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 I know they say it differently. Very good. Any, Councilmember Harris?
I would like to appoint Raymond Silva.
Okay. So that's two. Councilmember Bennett?
I would like to appoint Kurt Gembio.
Jim Bruno?
Jared Bruno.
Very good. And Vice Mayor?
I would like to appoint Mr. Henry Bornstein.
And after going through it, I would like to appoint Mr. Dirk Sluton. Any questions? All right. At this point, would you like me to make the appointment for chair?
Absolutely.
Partisan?
Now they're on there.
The question was, do we still want to entertain, now that we've made our appointments, do you really still want to be on this? I'm assuming since you're here in the present of the audience that you do, and the fact that you didn't get up and speak and say, please pull my application. So moving forward, Mr. Jim Bruno, would you chair this committee to start out with, for the first year? Would you accept that appointment?
Why not?
With a little less enthusiasm. Thank you, Kurt, I appreciate it.
Not to, Mr. Mayor.
No, I appreciate that, and if you don't know, Mr. Jim Bruno also serves as chair on the Vector Control Board, as we discussed at the last meeting, and I thank you for your service, and it's great to see you in the chamber again.
And also has had extensive practice up here on the dais.
Extensive practice, so I think it'd be good to start this out. Any other questions?
We do need a motion.
And we do need a motion. It isn't just consensus.
So we need a motion for the chair? Or we need a motion for the whole thing?
For the whole thing.
Oh, yeah, I thought you were just wanting to in the chair, so. Well, I'd like to do it, but mine keeps going backwards and blanking out on the sample system.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to appoint the five members to the committee, as stated by the council, with the chair as stated by yourself, Mr. Mayor, as a resolution number twenty seventeen dash zero seven, an ordinance of the City Council of Clearlake, adding chapter three dash seven to the Clearlake Municipal Code related to a transactions and use tax to be administered by the State Board of Equalization. Oh, you went too far, that's the actual. I'd like to approve resolution twenty seventeen dash oh seven, with the members stated by the council, and the chair stated by the mayor.
Thank you.
And we'll stop right there.
I have a motion and a second, quid pro quo, poll vote, please.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Burdock?
Aye.
Thank you all very much, thank you to everyone who submitted application. I know I can't speak for everyone here at the council dais, but spend a lot of time going over your applications, looking at the resumes, and again, I really appreciate the pool that we had to choose from, it was difficult, there's a lot of experience here in the room, and I thank you all, thank you all for submitting.
And just, can I ask that, I'm assuming we have emails on the applications, but I want to make sure we do have application, or emails from everybody, so we can get that first meeting set up.
An email address on each of the applicants?
Yeah.
If you did not include your email address on your application, before you leave tonight, can you please provide that to the city manager, if you're one of the appointees? Because we'll be calling our first meeting in a second.
And I think we're good on that.
Thank you all very much. Moving on to item ten, consideration of abandoned vehicle abatement or ABAs, Mr. Folsom.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for a little bit of background here, California Vehicle Code two two seven one zero authorized the collection of a dollar per registered vehicle fee to be utilized to help cover the cost of abandoned vehicle abatement, which is, you'll hear us all refer to as ABA. In nineteen ninety-one, the cities of Clearlake and Lakeport, along with the County of Lake, signed a joint powers agreement to create an abandoned vehicle abatement authority. In twenty eleven, the authority was extended for ten years, but the county suspended the funding due to concerns about Proposition twenty-six, which it just passed, and whether the fee fit the exemption requirements to qualify as a fee. On January fifteenth, twenty sixteen, the California Attorney General issued an opinion that furthers the argument that the ABA fee is a fee rather than a tax. And just read this, because this is kind of very important. The Office of the California Attorney General has a time that it would be wrong to conclude that any amount collected by a local government that does not fall within one of the exceptions enumerated in Part twenty-six is necessarily a tax. Further, the California Attorney General has determined that a green building standard fee required to be collected by cities, counties, and cities and counties was not a tax, subject to Prop. twenty-six, but a regulatory fee, because although it did not benefit the fee payers, the fee did support a program that addresses societal costs of the fee payer's economic activities. The Attorney General's office concluded that when charges required to be collected by cities, counties, and cities and counties are intended principally for the protection of the health and safety of the public, they are validly levied regulatory fees and do not constitute an unlawful tax. So on January tenth of this year, the County of Lake Board of Supervisors reauthorized the use of ABA funding by the Abandoned Vehicle Abatement Authority. Just for some further information, our current City of Clearlake fiscal year-end twenty seventeen budget money item, we only had five thousand dollars per vehicle abatements. We currently have less than fifteen hundred dollars in that account, and that's, so that five thousand dollars is to last the whole year, we've already used thirty-five hundred of it, three thousand of it on one tow.
Right.
So, the money can go very quickly, is my point there. Our recommended action is by motion authorize the city manager to accept abandoned vehicle abatement fees. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Folsom.
I think this is controversial.
Councilmember Overton?
I just have a question, so if I'm right, I mean, that was back last year that this was, they got the Attorney General's clarification, so why did it take so long for them to approve this? I mean, the money's there, am I not correct? So do they have to give us the money for last year and this year, then? That would normally, isn't there a percentage against us?
There's actually money going back to twenty eleven that's sitting there.
Okay. So there's quite a bit of money that we'll be getting from this to be able to help clear up these.
Yeah, so the next, the next step here is that the Joint Powers Authority is going to be meeting to discuss various things as far as the allocation and those types of things.
So when they stopped it, you know, they stopped it because they were waiting for this clarification, was that my understanding of this, they didn't, they weren't sure what, whether they could continue to collect?
There was concern from the county council that this could be considered to be a tax rather than a fee. So this, I'll call it opinion from the Attorney General's office came out, this made them much more comfortable in feeling this is a fee and not a tax.
You can comment on that one, but I won't.
Yeah, well, actually, you were the mayor when this was, you signed it, and we still had to wait for the fees to be released back from two thousand and eleven.
The fee, the fee and the tax thing got argued a lot, but they were over this, not just this one.
Any other comments, council?
Yee-haw.
I'd like to open this up for public comment. This is your chance to talk about this item, if you would like to. Mr. Van Dieter?
I was just curious, since there's so little amount of money each year for this, and there's so many abandoned vehicles out there, that are you being selective in what you're choosing to spend money on first? I mean, you mentioned something, one tow was three thousand dollars, I mean, how many other, other toes that you could have gone less cheaper? Number wise.
May I answer the question? Ask just, I mean, is there's a thought about that? Well, this, what you saw in the presentation was what we tried to allocate out of our general fund to remove abandoned vehicles. This is going to be a huge shot in the arm, but of course, we want to spend our money wisely, to try to explain, we had a motorhome, a large RV, that had caught fire on San Joaquin, and it took nearly all of our money that we had set aside for this year to remove that single vehicle. Right.
And so, you know, public safety is our first priority, so those are the, that's where we're trying to spend the bulk of that money on tows, is if we've got a vehicle that's causing a health life or health issue, we need to have the funds available to take care of.
Yeah, I understand that, totally, yeah.
However, with this other money, now we'll be able to just get rid of it goes all over the place.
Well, we're gonna prioritize.
We will prioritize, but.
Because we don't want to waste what money we've now been allotted through ABA. There's so much to do out there, so. But I want, I'm glad you brought this up, Mike, and it gives me an opportunity to do a little stumping. Since this came out in the paper, I've had three different conversations. People irritated because this RV showed up on their property or down the street, but instead of dealing with it at the time that it happened, we're dealing with the people who dropped it off unlawfully, and trying to identify the people responsible for that vehicle, nobody said anything. So one of my frustrations is, we have a lot of RVs, we have a lot of abandoned boats still on private property, and it shouldn't be the city's dollar through these ABA funds to clean up these properties. It should, in my opinion, be the responsibility of that property owner that has that disabled boat RV or nuisance, and that's what our code enforcement folks are working on. I've heard some threats of, well, I'm just gonna push it in the street, and I'm hoping that the chief will help us to try to corral that too, because the city and taxpayers' dollars should not be spent cleaning up a personal's garbage trailer or garbage RV. We had a complaint from some residents who lived behind our Safeway there on Burns Valley Road, because in the middle of the night, a fifth wheel was dropped off there, it was full of trash, and, which constituted hazardous materials dump, and I forget how many thousand dollars it cost the city to try to clean that up, did you remember, chief?
I think it was right around eighteen hundred dollars, right around there.
And we had trouble finding a vehicle or a tow service that would actually deal with that and deal with the cleanup, so I'm asking everyone out there, I'm asking anyone watching in TV land, please pay attention to this, we do have some nomadic RVs that seem to be moving around since the fires. We need, we need to keep an eye out, so we can keep our neighborhood safe and clean. So thank you for your question. You know, and this, that remind me of something that, I know there's a lot of wrecking yards out locally, we don't have that here probably, but in larger city areas where the wrecking yards, they will go out and pick these things up free for the salvage. I don't know if that's been addressed in this area. I think scrap metal was. And I know there's a title issue in regards to that and all that, too, so I mean, I don't know if that's something that's been bothered about. I think perhaps when the scrap metals were, you know, metal and aluminum and that type of thing had some significant value, there was some truth in that, but I think since those values have plummeted, now it's simply a liability. And remember that the things that are contained within that RV, or that boat, or whatever the vehicle, oftentimes those are hazmat, I mean, up to and including human waste, hypodermic needles, that kind of contraband, that they have to be removed carefully, and by someone skilled in doing that and with the protective clothing to do that. So that's kind of the problem we've been up against. Anything else I forgot, chief?
No, I think you covered everything.
No, thank you, sir. Any other comment?
I was just, I was just gonna say that one of the things that has come just through the senior center, I had a senior trying to remove a vehicle, and they told him to do all these things, well, it's come down to that the tow companies and stuff say they will not remove that vehicle if it doesn't have the actual title. He went to DMV and got a clearance and all this stuff, but they still won't touch it because he doesn't have a title. And it's sitting on a vacant property, he was just trying to help a friend that's in London get it off that property for him, and he's been having, I mean, I've been trying to help him for like four months, trying to remove this vehicle, and we thought we were doing everything we were told to do, he went and did everything he was supposed to do, and now they're telling him, no title, we'll move it, after he's got the clearance from DMV. So I think that's one of the things that we.
Well, I hope he doesn't give up.
I guess, he's a go-getter, but I'm just thinking that that might be one of the problems that we may want to check into, to see how we're gonna deal with it.
But thank you very much, and again, I'm asking the community to help us with this, so we can keep the people that are responsible for those vehicles financially responsible as well. Vice Mayor Sabatier?
I just want to say that I've heard of the comment multiple times, and I think that Mr. Van Dieter kind of alluded to that thirty-five hundred dollars or three thousand dollars sounds like a lot. Some people are saying, I'll gladly tow it for fifty dollars, well, we can't go and ask anybody, you need to be permitted, you need to be licensed, we have liability issues if we just utilize anyone, and every single time we are towing, we are going with the lowest possible cost to the city, we're not just throwing money away at the wind, unfortunately, it costs a lot of money. And so I think that we're doing the right thing, I'm really excited about this back-to-back Measure V, getting that set up, and the ABA, that is really exciting right there, so I'm looking forward to this being put to action, I'm looking forward to the meeting at the county level, a third time's a charm, and so let's get this going, so not just us, but the entire county, Lakeport, as well as us, can start cleaning ourselves up.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. It's still public comment, if you'd like to address, council, this is still your time to do so.
Members of council, Kurt Jim Bruno, City of Clearlake, on the ABA program, years ago, when I was very involved with it, and I chaired the committee for two years on it, we had to worry about how much money we were gonna get, and if I recall correctly, the more cars we towed, the more money we got, and Jeff Smith at the time used to get ahold of us volunteers and say, tow some more cars, if you don't tow them, the county's gonna take the money that they're gonna tow. So I've forgotten now, in a lot of years, how that really worked, but we towed a lot of cars.
Thank you for your questions.
And most of it was done by volunteers. That just tip you off to that, if you can legally get a couple of volunteers. That just tip you off to that, if you can legally get a couple of volunteers, Chuck and I did it, for nine years, every Monday morning, we got a lot done in a half a day. Thank you, glad to see you back on the ABA program.
Thank you, Kurt. Anyone else wishing to discuss or make comment on this? Now is your time. Seeing then, I'll close it, bring it back to council for deliberation, action.
I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I make a motion to authorize the city manager to accept the abandoned vehicle abatement fees for use and abating abandoned vehicles.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, for further to have a roll call.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Burdon?
Absolutely aye. Thank you, ma'am. Let's see, what time is it? Do you have a city manager report, sir?
A fairly long one. Just a couple of updates. We did hold our final strategic planning ad hoc committee meeting, you should be seeing us come back to you with that strategic plan in February. We also held our final marijuana ad hoc committee meeting as well. We came to a consensus and recommendation to what we want to be presenting to the full county, well, actually, to the planning commission and then to the council. With regards to marijuana, next week, I'll be attending a League of California meeting on the AUMA, Adult Use of Marijuana Act, and Lieutenant, oh, sorry, Tim, I've changed your name to Lieutenant Selis, you'll be attending a Cal Chiefs meeting on the AUMA as well. I attended the Chamber of Installation Dinner with the mayor. It's good to see former Mayor Denise Lustelou become president of the chamber, and Robert Bocabella become the vice president of the chamber. I attended the NWA CP installation with Councilmember Bennett and Lieutenant Selly. And then just a note, there is a five mile an hour speed limit now on Clear Lake, per the Sheriff's Department and Board of Supervisors. That will be in effect until the lake reaches 7.9 on the run sea gauge, so it's a slowdown. I saw quite a few boats speeding the last couple of days, even with that speed limit on there. And then, just another note, upcoming next week, we have the general plan, it's a special meeting of the planning commission on Tuesday, January 31st at 6 o'clock. Very significant event in Clear Lake's history, we haven't updated our general plan since the eighties, so this has kind of been, what, five, six plus years in the making, so we're finally bringing this to...
Thirty-plus.
That's actually been worked on, so, and we're finally going to bring that one to finale, hopefully.
Thank you, sir.
That concludes my report.
And just a comment on one of your areas, our programs are also closed.
Correct.
They're launching at the launch facilities within the city.
Doug, you want to elaborate?
Yes, that's true, Mayor. Actually, I've been working with the county resource, water resource officer up there, and Yoho County...
Flood control?
Flood control, yeah. Actually, we've been talking every morning around between 6:00 and 6:30, we're watching the levels, they're updating us on how much they're letting out. As you guys know, a lot of this is being held up because of the riffle, we've got a significant sediment loading in there. We have two of our facilities is underwater, the actual platforms we first will end, that's why I closed it, when that was underwater, because you have two open. From what I'm hearing, by maybe Sunday, we'll be back down to 7.5, 7.6, and then we'll reopen again.
Do you know what the release is, what the rate of release?
It's been pretty consistent between 25 and 3200, 35, right around there, it's back and forth, back and forth. But I do want to caution and make everybody aware, there is a lot of debris in the lake, a lot of trees, we had a tree delivered to the harbor tonight, it's about 100 feet long, it's a monster, and we got to pull that out tomorrow. It's a lot, we don't want nobody hitting those trees and getting ejected from their boats.
Anything else, sir?
Nothing else, Mayor.
Councilmember Overton?
I would really like to congratulate our new chamber officers. I'm sorry that I was unable to go, I had to work that night, so I'm looking forward to it, but I wish them all the best of luck, and hoping that we can move that chamber forward and really start doing something here. I just see that this year's going to be that move forward year with everything that we're doing, and I'm kind of excited to finally see it happen for all these years. So congratulations to them. I went to a senior summit that I was sitting on, we're working with Jim Steele on that, we had another meeting yesterday, it's coming along very well. Anybody that would like to participate, or know anybody that would like to be a sponsor, we are looking for sponsors for that still. That's something that's going to benefit all our seniors, you know, educating people, telling them what's here, you know, and trying to boost the information for our seniors to get, and also boost, of course, our senior centers. And we're starting a foundation, and Jim's named it the Silver Foundation, and none of us are arguing with him, he's good. So that's what it's going to be called, it's the Silver Foundation, he found somebody to volunteer to help start that, so that's really something that's going to be good for the whole county. I think it's going to bring all our senior centers together and kind of give us the kickstart to start working together, which I think is really important, as we all know that some fundings are going to probably be cut or fired, and look there in the healthcare district does fund those senior centers on this end of the lake, so I think it's good that maybe we start working together to kind of see how things are going to work. And so I was really happy that we're getting, we're really moving with that. And I went to LAFCO, was a little late, thank you Bruno for stepping in on that, I appreciate it, I love him. Meeting hopefully with St. Helena Hospital on Friday, I missed the meeting, but Bruno probably went, did you would go with Bruno, on the Healthy Collaborative. So I went to Red Bed Healthcare District this week, meeting, so we all give our reports for the senior centers. But when I was there, David Santos was there talking about the hospital, and pretty exciting that they are, actually have really brought the hospital up to the point that they're being really recognized from the Dennis Health, on how well they've done here in Clear Lake, to the point that there is a very good possibility in the next eight years, they're actually going to be building a new hospital here. And so that's kind of exciting to know that Dennis Health is really looking at us now more as a more permanent enlarging and doing something here, so another good thing that's happening for us, so I'm excited about that. And that's my report, thank you.
Vice Mayor Overton?
Councilmember Harris? Well, I had a, I attended a meeting here at City Hall, it was put on by Concerned Citizens Group again, it was the second meeting, and they brought up a gentleman by the name of Jeff Gilman, and he's with the Redwood Gospel Mission in Santa Rosa, and he came up to kind of convey some of the aspects that they've adopted over the years in helping to deal with the different concerns that result from the homeless population in their community, and there's a large group of people that actually attended, it was quite a turnout, and so there's a ball rolling now towards finding some solutions, some viable solutions. And I think probably the most notable thing that I took from is that he gave a perspective, an interesting perspective, that was less on the concept of providing direct assistance and more about providing somebody their humanity back, and that's a lot of times what they're missing, is somebody that'd be caring for them and showed them some concern, so, and getting them in touch with the families. Also, I attended a fundraising event over at the Cornellson Center, and put on by the, I believe by Canucka Unified School District, and it was a really nice time to go there and take a look at that Cornellson Center, it's been a lot of energy put into that, and it's a beautiful place, a really nice venue for our community, and we appreciate the school district for their work on that. And I attended my, obviously, as I'm working myself into this role, I did my public service ethics educational course, which was interesting, I guess there's quite a few more little things that I'll have to address, and that's one of them, so that's taken care of, so. And I just want to say thank you all to the Oversight Committee, everybody that's taken a position on the Oversight Committee, it's a huge step in the right direction for our community having Measure V, and then those of you that are stepping into that role, all of you will do a very good job with that, and all of you have your very huge strengths in different areas of that concept, so it was really kind of neat to see people come together that will form that committee, so that is it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Counsel, where we go?
I attended the, along with the city manager, the NWA CP, putting in their officers for the coming year on the 19th, it was a fairly good turnout here in City Hall. Also, Lieutenant Selly, myself, and Officer Nixon from the Police Department, attended a neighborhood watch on the same night as the Chamber Commerce Installation, so the mayor and I split duties on that. He paid, I didn't. So the neighborhood watch was good, we had probably 20 people there, and it was held up at the Baptist Church, and they'll have other meetings that we will be attending. As far as the ABA with the abandoned vehicles, we've had two meetings so far up at Lakeport. We have another meeting scheduled for February 1st at 11:00 AM, if anybody's interested in attending. I don't know if it'll be in conference room A or B.
The city, the Lakeport's conference?
Oh, I'm sorry, City Lakeport. Council chambers, okay. And that's this coming Wednesday, we'll have a forum there, representing from Lakeport City Council, myself, and from Board of Supervisors. Last time we had a meeting, we didn't have a forum, so not much got done. Also, I got a note to thank the AmeriCorps and CC4C for cleanup on Martin Luther King Day. You know, our city public works has done an awesome job this winter with heavy rains, we've had a little flooding, I understand, not only for their efforts, but the CC4C has cleaned out our feeder streams of the muck that was in there, the push carts that were in there, they're just an awesome, awesome group of volunteers who are out there almost every day, you could see them with their jackets on and picking up here and there, either in groups or sometimes by themselves out there. I don't think anybody can give them enough thanks. They're at our judges breakfast on Thursday morning, and we have representation here in council meetings, oftentimes, they do so much for our community, and it paid off this last, these last big storms we've had. It's helped our community so much, so big thanks to AmeriCorps and CC4C.
Thank you, Councilmember Bennett. Vice Mayor?
I will start with the meeting that both Councilmember Harris and I went to, that was here on our chambers, I believe it was on January 19th, for the Concerned Citizens, speaking with Mr. Jeff Gilman from Santa Rosa about homelessness. I took away some quotes as well and some information, one of them was, we don't feed the homeless, we eat with them, and that right there already creates a different relationship and a different way to tackle the problem, rather than putting out the hand, we're really trying to, as Mr. Harris said, make them feel human again, make them have this feeling that someone cares about them and wants to listen. But the other one was a book that the pastor mentioned, which was When Helping Hurts. Sometimes what we do, we think is good, and we think it's helpful, but in fact, it's not really helping, it's only continuing the problem, exacerbating the problem, or making people more dependent on our help rather than providing the help that makes an actual change. And the last one was Give Real Change, Not Spare Change. So I really appreciated the words that he shared with us, he's offering to share resources, I know that I've already spoken with our mayor based on his activities with finding a solution to our homeless issue as well. This is one of those things that I think fits perfectly within the puzzle that we're trying to solve, and not another layer on top of everything else that's happening. So I'm really happy that, it seems like all groups working will work together rather than against each other, so I'm really excited about that part. I also did go to LAFCO, we did two things, other than approving the budget for the year, we did an annexation of a piece of property in Middletown to the, I'm going to say it wrong, Calliope Water District, and then there was a consolidation of two water districts as well in the Clear Lake Oaks area. I was present via phone, again, thank you for letting me do so, for the MJ Marijuana Ad Hoc Committee. And that's pretty much it. I do want to thank interim chief Selly for accidentally and gratefully stopping by during our homeless conversation here, he added a good, some good information, and made a great connection in a positive way with one of our constituents to guide her in the right direction to continue the help that she's trying to provide for the homeless. Thank you very much for spending the time to stop by, be curious what was happening, and take part, and offer some great participation to that, so thank you very much for that. And that's it for my report.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Well, let's see, I also sat in on our strategic plan, I'd like to thank all the city staff for putting that together and getting that done, particularly Mr. Becknell, great presentations, very informative, and you put a lot of personal time and effort in it, and it is appreciated and noticed. We'll have that out soon, I hope, as we're finalizing that report. Attended the chamber installation. If you're a member of the chamber, thank you very much, if you're not, you must become one, as far as I'm concerned. We are trying to create a positive business environment in the city, there are many positive things happening, and I met with the new president, Denise Lustelou, owner of Big O Tires and Enterprise Towing, and we're going to come visit businesses, hand them applications, and encourage their participation in the chamber, probably starting next week. So if you haven't seen us, don't lock the doors when we come to your business, I'm hoping you'll welcome us in. This is a huge part of our community, I'd like to thank Mr. Folsom, he's also on the board, for our chamber, there are good, positive things that are happening, and it isn't just the Clear Lake Chamber, it's referred to as the Clear Lake Chamber, that's what it is by title, but that particular chamber body represents everything from Glenham, Clear Lake Oaks, of course, Clear Lake, Lower Lake, and even into the Middletown area. So we want to help businesses, we want to just not survive, we want to thrive. We are a small, singular community of about 65, 67,000 people in Lake County, and we really need to pull our resources and work together if we're going to be successful. My next meeting was League of Cities on the 19th, as I was appointed by our division to serve as a public safety member. Very informative meeting, it was our first meeting in the year, so there was several things, it was kind of a housekeeping meeting, we got to listen to representatives from state legislature and others talk about this upcoming budget, shared that with Mr. Folsom. Our governor is not very excited about our budget, we think we may have some shortfall statewide, and of course, that may come back and impact our city. I'm hopeful that that may not come through fruition, but we need to watch our pennies and spend our money wisely. And I want to again thank Mr. Becknell for his good work, excuse me, with our audit tonight, that we are doing that and being fiscally sound. An interesting thing, and also for marijuana ad hoc, I was able to participate with that, actually in person, not on the phone, something that came up that we may want to revisit is delivery services from the different collectives, needs to be a third party, it can't be a part of the collective, and I think that was part of our discussion, and I apologize for doing that here, but before... And I apologize for doing that here, but before I forget, I wanted to make sure you were aware of that. That came from the public safety meeting and then we all met as a division. A lot of the new council members were present there at the training. Mr. Folsom, I don't know when the next training would be, but I'd request that we look and stay on top of the next league meeting for our new council members, newly elected council members and even returning if there's any update information. I thank councilmember Overton for being our second with the League of Cities, but we need to be involved. There are some serious things happening in Sacramento and if we're not there, we don't have a voice. Let's see. Have a meeting coming up tomorrow, I'm not sure where it's going to go, but on the issue of homelessness, they just did the point in time count, so we're trying to get accurate numbers, accurate numbers of our homeless. That doesn't just mean people who are living out, you know, in our wooded areas or on the streets. It includes people who couch surf, it includes even our teens that couch surf. And I'm hopeful that we will get accurate numbers because with accurate numbers comes accurate funding. And with those things, we might be able to help each other and help ourselves as a community. I want to thank Mayor Stacy Matina from the City of Lakeport. She and I have been working with our law enforcement community, mental health and our hospitals to see what else we can do, looking at homelessness on an individual basis and not as a collective, let's just put everybody into a room and let them sleep there and be warm at night. Let's really peel back the layers of the onion and see what we can do to help individuals. And again, Lieutenant, I thank you for your time and participation in that. Your expertise has been very valuable, as well as Chief Rasmussen and the other members of the city and our district attorney. So with that, I'll conclude my report. Looking forward to an exciting February and good things that are happening there. Absolutely, thank you, Joyce. Anyone is welcome to join the chamber. You don't need to be a business owner. The chamber is very important. One of the things I also wanted to comment on, we had a paper hearings tonight. Thank you for sitting through those, they can be kind of dry, they can be kind of boring. I really want to give kudos to our code enforcement staff for the diligent work that they're doing. As I came into the city hall one afternoon, just to kind of collect my mail, answer some phone calls and do that type of business, I'm listening to a gentleman complaining because his property had just been cited and he's complaining that the neighbor across the street is the worst I saw that his was. I just want to point out that we had many years without code enforcement and things became run down in our city. We as individuals, we as residents, we as members of a neighborhood and as property owners ourselves need to take responsibility for our properties and simply because the neighbor across the street may have a dirty property doesn't mean that you get to let your property decline. And we have a lot of work to do. We have a lot of work to do to clean this city up and I just implore each of our residents and each of the guests of our city to help us do that. Don't throw trash on the ground. Help us get our shopping carts back to the stores where they belong. And I'll just conclude on that. It's up to us to clean our city, not just the people that work under the roof here at City Hall. Joe, any comment? We're going to move to future agenda items. Is that what you'd like to talk about, sir?
I wanted to make sure.
I thought you might, I will not forgive you. So we're now moving on to future agenda items. Vice Mayor, you have a comment?
Yes. Based on my comment earlier on the assessment of properties, I would like for us to possibly discuss an ad hoc committee to review the code enforcement process and then bring that back to the council. That way we can have a more in-depth conversation so we don't spend an enormous amount of time right here.
Specifically, you're looking for a defined procedure?
Review of the entire procedure, potentially the paperwork that's also submitted since we've had issues, or not issues, we've had concerns with the paperwork maybe not being as clear and legible as it should be for the public to understand what it is that we are asking of them.
Mr. Folsom, cut that?
So process and, process and procedures?
Yes, please.
And who should sit on the ad hoc, what's your recommendation?
I think we might want to bring it on another agenda so that we can discuss that. Not me.
I think you just agree with something.
And I'm also wondering, we have a lot of red tag buildings in our neighborhoods, all our neighborhoods. We all have one probably real close to our homes. I'm seeing a lot of people going in and out and I know our police officers are having issues with people going in and out and I'm wondering if we can discuss any enhanced security methods that we can provide to those red tags to try to prohibit more entryway into those buildings. For instance, I see padlocks on real estate houses, but I don't see padlocks on red tag houses. Wondering what's possible that we can do to enhance the security, to lower the process that our police officers have to do and to protect ourselves from any other issues that may occur on red tag properties. Again, for a future agenda, please. And I'm looking for consensus from the council.
I'll just leave that to Mr. Folsom, maybe you have code enforcement and PE for recommendation? Is that what your thought is?
And that that works for me. I'm just looking to see if there's anything more that we can provide or do to make that community that has a red tag house be more secure.
Perhaps costs associated? We have consensus?
Yeah, we're asking to have a report kind of brought back to us, is that what you're wanting or you want that?
Process.
Or that could be a part of the ad hoc committee?
That's what I was thinking because I think you're going to start taking too much time, I think that's created, I mean, let's bring it back to see if we want to do that and then just make it all apart.
So let's bring it all together.
So if you can add that to the process and procedure, please and thank you.
Anything else on that list of things to do?
I'll limit it to two.
Okay, sir, thank you. Anything else? Future gen items? Councilmembers? Very well. I have nothing else. We're adjourned. At what time do we have?
8:08.
8:08.